Steve's here, recording for us.
Okay, good. Do we have, Laura, maybe you can answer this before we get started, or maybe one of the city attorneys is there, whether or not I'm gonna need to read the script?
There's no city attorney.
Public hearing.
There's no attorney.
You, you don't need to read the script for a continuance, you can read the script if you want to. There is no city attorney here.
Nobody to pick on her.
No, I don't, trust me, I don't wanna read it.
Are there any public comments?
Well, that's the question, is there public comments?
I don't think.
It's empty.
Um, hold on, would you like, first off, do you wanna start the, officially start the meeting and then we can get into it?
Yes, yeah, let me do that. You have, is the recording ready to go, or are you gonna let me know?
It is ready.
Okay. All right, then I will call to order the Monday, August 24th, 2020, meeting of the Oregon City Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is public comment for any topics that are not on our agenda this evening. Uh, are there any public comments?
John, did you have a comment, sir, or were you waiting for the OC 2040? I have nobody signed up with me for comments.
Okay. Then with no public comments, we will move on to item number one, which is a public hearing. Continuance of GLUA-20-00020, proposed 30-bed residential memory care facility. So who's up on this?
Uh, I am. Um, so staff's recommendation for this, uh, public hearing is to continue it to October, the 26th, 2020. Recommending the continuance of the public hearing because, uh, the applicant is willing to redesign the proposal, responding to the public comment that we have received to date. Um, we are not prepared to present this evening. Um, we would be presenting a staff report, uh, based upon a revised proposal at the October 26th public hearing. Um, and we have received approximately eight public comments about the proposal. Uh, spoken with the applicant before the agenda was published and they are willing to, uh, provide a revised proposal. Um, and also have agreed to extend the 120-day decision deadline for the corresponding amount of time until January the 4th, 2021. Uh, we don't anticipate it will take that long to reach a decision. Um, however, they have granted us that extension. Um, and, uh, we will continue coordinate and work with the applicant to move forward uh, with a recommendation for approval, hopefully, based upon a revised proposal. I've spoken to, um, a couple of the concerned neighbors today. Um, and I, uh, let them know that there was a recommendation for a continuance. Um, and they told me that they were going to communicate with the other neighbors about the hearing. Um, so it seems as if the, the word has gotten out. Um, and that may be why we don't have everybody here to testify. Uh, plus the agenda was available all week before the meeting, so I assume people have looked at that.
Can I ask a question?
So, have any questions? Yeah, sure.
Pete, did I miss something in the packet that was sent out to us? Did these just come in today at those last minute? These, um...
Um, hang on, Pete, before you answer, I don't think I officially said that I'm opening the public hearing, so we were... The public hearing is officially open.
Um, no Commissioner Guile, this is, uh, not new, this is the same information that was in the packet.
Okay, I must have missed it, I'm sorry. You said something about today.
Oh, yeah, today I spoke on the phone to a couple of the neighbors who were asking about tonight's hearing and whether it was gonna be continued. And I was just confirmed that I told them that.
I misunderstood, okay, thanks, I thought there was news.
That's okay. No.
Okay. Um, so, Pete, anything else? Uh, I have nothing more to add unless you wanna add something, Laura?
No.
Okay, so I'm assuming that, um, I see Mr. Radulescu and the Donovan's, uh, they're applicants, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, did you wanna say anything to us this evening, or is what Mr. Walters, Mr. Walters said adequate?
Uh, yeah, we don't have anything further to add.
Okay.
Same here.
And, uh, any, any questions from any of the commissioners?
No.
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
I make the motion that we, um, continue this to October 26th, is that correct? I don't have the number in front of me, I'm looking at the pictures.
That's correct. Hey, is there a second?
All seconded.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Guile, seconded by Commissioner Schlagenhoffer to continue this item to October 26th, 2020. Call the rule, please.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner Gage?
Aye.
Commissioner Staggs?
Aye.
Chair Mitchell?
Aye.
Motion approved?
Okay, thank you all, that takes care of that. And we will move on then to the work session item, OC 2040, community conversation. And I, Mr. Walter, I assume that's you also?
Yes, it is, thank you. Uh, so, uh, this is the first time this presented a community conversation to any group. Um, and I'm glad it was with the planning commission. Um, hopefully that, uh, we can post this recording of this, uh, community conversation to the website so that people can see how they, how they're done. Um, it's, uh, supposed to be fun. Uh, there are no right or wrong answers, and a little background on this. Um, the community conversations are just part of the public engagement plan for OC 2040, in addition to the efforts of the project advisory team and also the survey that has been running for over a month now and has had a lot of feedback from the community. Um, OC 2040 is our comprehensive plan update, the first cert, full update that we've done since 2003. And our comprehensive plan will guide land use decisions for the next 20 years. And the first step in this process is creating a community vision that reflects what our community loves and wants to preserve about Oregon City and what they'd like to see changed by 2040. Um, and it consists, or will consist, I, I mean, of a broad set of goals and policies that implement the vision and guide future growth and development. The idea behind these community conversations is that they're, um, going to allow anyone to facilitate a discussion, discussion with any group that they belong to. And these can be done virtually or in small physically distance groups. And we want them to be our means to engage a very broad cross-section of Oregon City residents and businesses and partners. Um, so today we're facilitating this, this conversation with you, the planning commission. And, um, these conversations are anticipated to go through the end of the summer into October of 2020. Um, and then we will compile a lot of that information to begin the crafting a community vision. Um, so, um, in your packet, there was a, a copy of the community conversations kit. And, um, on page five of that packet, which is actually page 14 of your whole planning commission packet, there are the questions, so you, you wanna refer to those, please do. Um, the, uh, very first question, and, uh, is a very simple one. Uh, why did you choose to live and work in Oregon City? And Laura and I are gonna record, um, your responses and also be recorded as well on the tape. Um, so that's the very first question before we dive into the other five. Um, so as residents and, um, businesses, why did you choose to live or work in Oregon City? Feel free to chime in.
I'll start.
Hello?
I'll start us off, is that, is that okay?
Yeah.
You know, we moved to Oregon City, uh, initially for a bunch of reasons. The practical reasons were that, uh, my wife and I both had a lot going on in Oregon City. My wife works on the, in Milwaukee, so it just made a lot of sense for us practically. But the more that I got to know Oregon City, the more impressed I became with the potential of Oregon City. It become a really amazing place. And that's what I tell people whenever I talk to them now, is that I believe in Oregon City because of the enormous potential I think it has. I think it's already got a ton of things going for it. It's got the typical, you know, cute little Oregon city downtown, like a lot of other places in Oregon. It's got the river, which is amazing, all great cities have a river. And, um, I think Oregon City has the potential for the river to become a much greater part of what, of how we... A much greater part of the experience of living in Oregon City. I think we can get a lot closer to it, and of course, the blue hair on property, the blue hair on site is a huge part of that, and then downtown Oregon City as well. And then I, whenever I talk about Oregon City with people, I also mention that, um, we have an incredible diversity of, uh, places in Oregon City and diversity of people and places. So, it's really a kind of a, it's, it's a great example of just the, the enormous potential of a lot of places in the, in the Portland metro area and towns around Portland. And I think, I personally believe that Oregon City is, uh, one of the, one of the, one of the best potential towns and cities around the Portland metro, personally, that's, that's what I believe. So whenever I talk to people about the OC 2040 and what we're doing, um, I'm always mentioning all those things and really trying to understand and where people are coming from, encourage them and, and really help them, help them kinda see Oregon City in a, in a new perspective, in a new light. Not that we're telling them what it is, but just helping them to see the potential of where we are, of what the city is and what the enormous potential is. And I think people get excited about that and they like that. And I think it will be a big part of us developing this plan for the next 20 years.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll dive in here, if that's all right. Um, we, we lived in Redland, uh, years ago and of cour, you know, did our shopping and, you know, going out to dinner and such, uh, in Oregon City and really liked it. And then when our kids were approaching school age, the combination of, um, what we knew about Westland Schools, my wife actually taught at Westland High School, so we moved into Westland, uh, lived there while the kids were in school. And, um, you know, we knew we always liked the Oregon City, it has a little, I'll say it's a little lower key, it's a little more, uh, diverse, there's, there's more, in a lot of ways, a lot more going on in Oregon City compared to Westland. But we really hadn't intended a move, except we'd happen to be out for a drive one day and, uh, and saw the model home in the subdivision, um, that we're living in and liked the builder and, and, uh, and so we built a new home and, and moved here. Uh, and it really, our perception or recollection of what Oregon City is like, you know, has turned out to be true. I, I think it's a lot more, um, interesting community, a lot more diverse, a lot more, a lot more going on. I, I, I think that makes it, um, very unique.
I, I, I think that makes it, um, very unique, you know, compared to some of our neighboring communities. So that's, that's kind of it for us, how we ended up here.
I guess I'll go next. And I've got a different perspective on all this, as you would expect. It's always coming from my side of, I lived in, uh, Multnomah County my entire life. I lived in, um, Twiliger, Taylor's Ferry, which was right off the Twiliger curves. And even with a five-foot drop waterfall that made lots of noise and covered up the freeway noise, still you could hear the, the Twiliger curves constantly. So I started looking for someplace else and I found this beautiful spot. I never thought I'd move out to Oregon City. Uh, to me, that was too far out when you're working downtown Portland. Uh, I liked the connections, the bus lines when I was in southwest Portland. But I found this spot out in Park Place area. And I liked it because it was up against a forest. You know what I'm going to say next? Um, I wanted the peace and quiet, the forest, this was going to be my last move because at my age, I don't want to pack up all my stuff and move again. Um, and then I, twenty-five days after moving in, somebody brought me a flyer that they were going to tear down the forest behind me. And I got to work and I fought through three elections and it got turned down. Three annexations got turned down because the voters had the right. Since then, the governor's taken that right away, so we can't vote. So to me, I've lived in the Multnomah area and near Tigard. I've lived in, on, on the Beaverden area for a while and, and went to school out that way. To me, I'm seeing Oregon City changed entirely. I'm seeing that we've got a Beaver Creek concept plan, that there's going to be so much home, so much development, so much traffic at, um, at, uh, two thirteen and Beaver Creek Road. I'm seeing South End planned with more homes and more congestion out there. And then going back to Park Place, the forest is gone, there's not going to be any peace and quiet up there. But everybody I talked to around Redland Road, where my city originally looked at, everybody disappointed because Redland Road is going to be such a tie-up in traffic. When they build out the fourteen-hundred-some homes from, on the Holly Lane extension, that's going to put so much traffic there and so much business. Um, the traffic on two thirteen, the traffic on Holcomb, on Redland Road, all of it's going to be a mess as far as I'm concerned. And I'm actually looking forward to moving outside of Oregon City. But I can't move far enough away because I keep thinking we're going to take over Estacada or Malala. But I, I've been looking for property further out in any area where I don't think it's going to, uh, the urban growth is going to expand. And so I'm kind of disappointed that I moved to Oregon City because I liked it. I liked the, the waterfalls, as Chris said, and the, and the, the river. That's why I opened my business downtown. And I'm just, I also wanted to get away from the taxes in, in Multnomah County, but my taxes have caught up to Multnomah County on my home. I wanted to move away from the politics of Portland. And now we've got, this is the second recall effort I've seen in, in Oregon City and it seems like politics are normal. I worked for the city of Westland for a while and they had recall the, of the mayor there. It just seems you can't get away from recalls and from the politics in the different cities. And so it's kind of, I keep thinking, maybe further I'll move out, maybe beyond Estacada, out in a forest somewhere. And I, God knows, I'm getting old enough that I don't want to keep moving all my stuff. God knows I have enough of that. Um, but it's just to me, we're growing so fast, we're going to be like a Tigard or Beaverden. We keep growing out in every direction we can. And I know tax dollars are important to us, but to me, it's going to make our traffic in our city, in our community, even worse. And, uh, so that's my view of it. Um, that's probably different than most people, but a lot of people, and they've said it during a lot of our meetings that we've had on Beaver Creek and other ones, they were upset because they moved to Oregon City and on the outskirts to enjoy rural life. And they wanted the animals, they, they wanted to feel like they were out in the country. And now we're losing that country feel. And I have a feeling the further we grow and the bigger we expand, we're not going to have that country feel unless we go outside the urban growth boundary. Um, my view, I love, at, at the opportunities, as Chris, uh, stated, there's opportunities for growth, for different things that we could do here. But some of us moved out here from Multnomah County, from Portland, uh, to enjoy rural life. And I'm afraid we're just losing that value, that feeling. And I personally, as I said, I, I'd rather get out while I can, while home values are up. Just me, my.
So peace, peace and quiet.
Peace and quiet. I'm not that old that I want a lot of peace and quiet, but it's nice in the evenings to enjoy the, the evenings.
Okay.
And not the.
Pete, is it okay if I, if I make a little, a few comments?
Absolutely.
Make this an interactive conversation?
Yeah, let's do it.
Commissioner Giles, I, I really appreciate you and I appreciate your perspective. Um, I, because I am from a different place originally, um, a more urban kind of city atmosphere. I, I want to tell a quick story. So we, we went out, we drove to Bend a couple of weekends ago, just for the weekend, check it out. You know, our, our yearly, our yearly trip to Bend. And we drove, on the way back, I was, I was commenting to my wife as I'm driving, I'm going, when it, when are we going to get to this, when are we going to get to Oregon City? And I was, I was surprised, you know, we're, we were driving, I forget what road we're on. But you know, Google Drive or Google Earth, you know, it takes you along all these. I mean, I, I, I thought I was like, I go, where is, I don't even know where I am, you know? And we're going through the hills, uh, east of Oregon City. And I was really surprised at how we just sort of, it's like all of a sudden, we were there. And the city kind of just was right there. And I was, I commented to my wife, I said, it's really amazing to me how here, here in Oregon, where the city and the forest really are so close to each other. And I'd like to just, I mean, I, I totally appreciate what you're saying, but I really think that we have an amazing, Oregon has really done an amazingly good job at keeping the city in that kind of, um, urban growth boundary and making it so the, you know, the wild, the wild sort of blue yonder out there beyond the city into the forest is so close and so accessible. And it's just right there for us to go to at any moment. And we even have places throughout the Portland metro area where we can enjoy the forest and the parks and the rivers right in the middle of our city. So, um, yeah, I, I, I think that's one of the, one of the pluses of Oregon City is we're just so close to nature and so close to the, um, to the natural environment that we can access it really easily. But I get what you're saying, you wanted something else and it's, you feel like it's sort of, it's growing into what you would want, what you, what you wanted as a family. Um, but anyways, just a different perspective, wanted to mention that.
I appreciate that, Chris. And, um, when we moved here, there was a complete forest there. I mean, there's a hu, huge area of forest. And we thought how great that was. And I came, originally, I was near Tryon Creek Park. I gave up Tryon Creek Park on Taylor's Ferry and darn it, I wish, because we could ride bikes all around that, enjoy Tryon Creek. Uh, I lived out near Glendover for a while and thought how nice it was. They had the track all around that you could walk in the evenings and then stop by Ringside for onion rings. Um, but I, I, years ago, I offered the idea of that Park Place area, why don't they make it a walk around of the area like they did it at, uh, Glendover, where people could walk their dogs? Right now, we see all these older folks, everybody walking their dogs on the streets or on the sidewalks and pooping on people's lawns. But I thought, wouldn't it be nice to have a nice dog walk that went all around that whole new Park Place concept plan? Or any of these concept plans? But as it is, they're all being built out and there's no plans for that. Maybe there's a park you can drive to. But I thought, God, all these seniors that are walking around. But again, not to challenge you on any of that, um, I moved because, and nobody told us that the forest was going to be taken down. And I, that, I thought, what a beautiful place. And it's funny, because when we looked at it, there was big boulders behind us. And we thought, oh, this is our little piece of Bend to Oregon. And you mentioned Bend, because boulders and trees. And I thought, God, I don't have to move to Bend, I've got it here in Oregon City. And now it's all gone, or it's going. So just my perspective on it, and as I said, it sounds negative. But I've watched, I remember Beaverden before there was Highway two seventeen. As a high school student out there, there was no two seventeen. Two seventeen changed Beaverden and Tigard. And I see all those growing so much, Bull Mountain Road wasn't there, all those, the road was there, but none of the, the traffic. Right now, Pacific Highway, I was out there last week, boy, what a, a tie-up of traffic. And I fear that our Beaver Creek Road, our two thirteen, our Redland, everything is going to be so tied up in traffic here. The more we grow out and the less we have attention we pay to broadening our roads or in, improving transportation in the city, I think we're going to have congestion worse than Tigard or, or Beaverden. My thoughts.
Well, let me just say, we all know there are lots of ways to grow smart, in a smart way, where we keep those amenities of the city that we like. The, the trees and the natural environment can be woven, can be woven through the city, doesn't have to go away. I think that's a conversation that we should have as a part of this OC twenty forty is, how do we, and I know there's lots of ways where we're doing it now, but could we, could we improve on that? On how we keep.
Yeah.
Threads of the natural environment in our city and a part of our city and a part of the experience of living here.
I agree, Chris.
Let's, uh, give, let's give the other planning commissioners a chance to answer this question. Uh, Patty, Mike, or Dirk, Dirk, you want to go?
Sure, yeah, thank you. Uh, for me, this question kind of has like three, three different facets to it. Um, because when I, when I was growing up as a kid, uh, we didn't want to live in Oregon City because it smelled. We, there was the, the dump we used to go to, it was an open dump, you just kind of threw your trash, you know, out there and the, I don't even know what we were filling up at the time. So it, it stunk and then the paper mill smelled and it was kind of the joke because we lived in Milwaukee and we thought, why would anybody want to live there? And then, uh, you know, I grew older and then, you know, got into my twenties, I moved, uh, moved up to Hawkinson, Washington, rented a house for a while. Uh, realized right away I didn't want to rent a house forever. So I started trying to figure out, where am I going to build a house? Uh, I went to Clackamas, even went to Gresham before it got too bad. And just couldn't really find the right spot, you know? I wanted to be close to the big city, but I didn't want to be in the big city. So it, it had to be the right, the right location, close enough to be, you know, because I, I had to work in the, in Portland at the time. So my commute couldn't be terrible, but I, I still wanted to be far enough out that I, I could enjoy, you know, some of the small towns, um, you know, uh, positive parts of, of a city. So, uh, we just started driving around and it just, we just kind of found it. You know, we found a small neighborhood that was being built on an old, um, farm field. Farmer decided to retire, it had just been annexed in and had a nice field in the back. You know, we saw deer walking by there and then, of course, the builder told us, no one's going to be building back there. Lasted about five years, then came the building permits and the land use application flyer in the mail. And, and then, you know, my wife was pretty upset about it. But I said, you know, they, those people have every right to develop their property the way, you know, the people did, that we're living in the house that they built. So it's kind of hard, hard to argue when you, I mean, you're, you're living in the, in the, you're living in the product that you're, you know, I mean, you helped create that by giving the developer money. He built you a house and then you blame the guy for allowing the, you know, you blame the city for allowing the, the guy behind you to do the same thing. So we can't really pick and choose. I still think the city has, you know, enough of the small town charm that it's, it's nowhere near Portland. And we don't have, we don't have those problems. Uh, it's, it's still a great town, you can know half the town still. Um, I, I really, I can't complain. I, you know, I've been here for twenty years, I still can't think of a place I'd rather live in, besides maybe moving just a little bit further out. But, uh, I mean, I can talk about the rest of the questions, I don't, it's just, I'm just trying to stick to the, uh, why I chose to move here and that's kind of how it happened.
Yeah, we're still on that one.
Okay, I'm trying to stick to that one. Uh, that's about all I had to put into that.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Michael, Patty?
I'll go ahead and go. Um, so, um, I've lived in, uh, Portland, um, most of my life. And, uh, in twenty-ten, we moved to California for four years to take care of my mom-in-law, who had Alzheimer's. So we came back, uh, in twenty-fourteen and we're trying to decide, where did we want to move? Um, we could move basically anywhere at that point. Our son was in college and it was just the two of us. So we looked at forty homes, now since I'm a realtor, that was pretty easy to do. Um, but, um, looked all over town. We even went to Vancouver to look, um, found a home in Gresham. We thought, well, maybe, because I, I grew up in Gresham, I went to Gresham High School, knew the area well. But then we also looked Happy Valley and Clackamas because we were in Happy Valley prior to going to California and liked it there. And we thought, well, let's look in Oregon City, never really considered living in Oregon City. And we ended up finding a home in a new subdivision that was very affordable. As a matter of fact, it was much more affordable than a home that was twenty years old in Gresham that we looked at that was about the same size. We thought, oh my goodness, our money goes a long way here in Oregon City. And not only that, being in a new subdivision, our home was adjacent to a fifteen-acre farm that had horses and goats. And we thought, oh my gosh, that is kind of the best of both worlds. So, um, we, we bought in Oregon City. Then we started to get to know Oregon City more. Um, one of the things I loved is, is, is the river, um, and the falls. And, um, went on, we went on tour at the, uh, well, the Legacy Falls Project Tour that they offer. And, um, it, it just, we just fell in love with the city. And then low and behold, we got land use notices. And our fifteen-acre solitude next to us was going to be all new homes on five thousand square foot lots. So, uh, we decided to move. And we moved three miles south of where we were. And so we are in another new home subdivision. And our backyard backs a five-acre parcel with trees and we're avid bird watchers and, and we love our setting. Now, no land use proposal has come through yet at this point, and I hope they don't. But, you know, if they do, so be it. It, you know, there's going to be progress and I know it will get developed at some point. But we love it here. We really, um, just have, have embraced Oregon City and we love the restaurants, the, the quaint shops. Um, just in close proximity to everywhere, really. You know, we're, we're up on Hilltop and so we're just, you know, ten minutes from two oh five and another ten minutes to fifteen minutes to about anywhere else. So that's why we're here.
Bobby, what do you think of the traffic in Oregon City?
Well, we'll get to that.
Okay.
So, next question, uh, what makes Oregon City special today and what should we strive to preserve or, uh, enhance?
Well, Mike didn't get to answer the last.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, he did.
Yeah, he did.
Bang, did.
Yeah, I went right after Tom.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
I'll start us off.
Go ahead. Yeah, sounds good, Chris.
There's two particular places in the city that I think are not yet the most special places in the city, but have, well, I'm going to talk about maybe three or four places. I think the river is one of the biggest elements of the city, that's one of the most important elements of the city. And it's one of the most special places of the city, although I don't think it's really been seen that way.
Hmm.
Um, perhaps, maybe it was at one time, but you don't really, you don't really even know it's there sometimes, you know?
Right.
Um, you got to kind of go down Highway ninety-nine and you got to kind of know where to go and get down there. It's not really, like my, my office is right on ninety-nine and Main and I go for walks a bunch all the time and I walk down Highway ninety-nine. And you just never, you know, Highway ninety-nine unfortunately cuts off the city from the river. So that's one of my interested, that's something I'm really interested in maybe looking at. But I think the river is the most, one of the most important, special places. And the falls, obviously, are one of the most special places of the city. And then we have this amazing, these levels of the city, you know? There's like three, four levels of the city that look down onto the river and down into that area and the downtown that I don't think a lot of people appreciate. And then maybe we could make, we could, we could somehow enhance those experiences somehow and make that a part of the experience of Oregon City. And then the last thing I want to say about special places in the city is that the Blue Heron site Heron site and the Home Depot area, I will call it, those are a mile apart. So, you can easily walk from one to the other. And everything in between there, I think is the jewel of Oregon City. Those two ends and the, and the, and the path to get to those two places, I think that is the jewel of Oregon City right there. And I think we ought to do everything we can to improve those two ends of the city and everything in between with as much of our energy that we can put together.
So, from the falls up to the very north of where Home Depot is, 213 area?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
I guess I'll go next. Most of you weren't on the commission probably four or five years now, since I put into motion the adoption of the concept plan for Willamette Falls, and it's been so long ago since we had gone over it and planned it, and I always said, I'd like to see it in my lifetime, but I'm beginning to think I may not. Those, what they've got, the concept plan for what they have planned there at the Willamette Falls, I thought was gonna be great. We had so many charrettes and so many meetings and, and Higregirkin had bought it and I, God, and the River Walk we were gonna have, and I'm, I'm beginning to wonder, because I know I've read about all the controversies going on now with, with the tribes. I'm hoping that that develops and becomes a major attraction for our city and it's gonna look as nice. Every time, what's, what's the tribes down on Highway 18?
The Confederate tribes.
Confederate tribes. Everything they put their money there and they're touches too, like their Brose Festival, the parade, they, their float is just fantastic. So, I'm looking forward to what they will plan down there and I wanna see it get going, either the walk or that whole area down there, because I think that's gonna be a, a major attraction. And what Chris just pointed out on 99, down there where Home Depot is, we've got the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, I know there's gonna be a hotel down there also that we plan on, that we talked about on the Planning Commission. And that's gonna be a major attraction down there and I can see that whole area expanding into something of more entertainment there, so that between there and the Willamette Falls area, I think we, we got some great potential down there. I look forward to it, but I don't know if I'll see it in my time. Takes, everything takes so long. That's all I have to say.
Great, thanks, Tom. Dirk?
Yes, sir. Okay, I'm gonna change direction a little bit on this one. I do agree with Commissioner Staggs that the, the, I guess that would be Main Street running into what's on the north end there, Washington Street, that section is definitely the place where a lot of the good new things are gonna happen. What I think makes Oregon City special today is, we have a lot of privately owned restaurants and shops, a lot of small shops, small businesses, where a lot of cities that grow, it goes into commercial and corporate and everything just gets big and it just turns into chains. And that's one of the things that I really like about Main Street is the privately owned smaller places, locally owned businesses. I, I think that's important, I think we should do everything we can to, to make sure that stays that way.
Okay, yeah.
That's a
Anything else? Anyone else to add? Anything?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in. Kinda interesting, if I had answered, I was hung up on the word today in that, in that question, because things obviously are different today than they were a few months ago. Except, last night, I, I'm kinda, I'm kinda getting, I'll loop back around, I'm kinda getting the end of the story ahead of the explanation, but anyway, last night, we picked up a takeout meal downtown.
Mm-hmm.
And it was packed. I, I mean, I, I had as much, to bring up one of Tom's favorite subjects, I, I had as much trouble parking last night as I've ever had downtown. And I know, and I know for retailers, it's, it's probably more of a struggle right now than even for the restaurants, but, but I was very encouraged at the foot traffic and the vehicle traffic downtown last night. And it made me feel better because, to me, the, the, the kinda that downtown, the retail, the restaurants and the events that happened downtown, to me, I mean, that's really a lot of what makes Oregon City special and I was, I was very concerned about that, but I'm a little less concerned now a- after last night. But I'm gonna tag on to something that Chris said, and I hadn't really thought of it in exactly these terms, but you remember when we talked about the, the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan or the Thimble Creek Concept Plan and the pearl and string approach? Apply that to downtown and it's, it's kinda pearl and two strings. There's the falls at one end and the end of the Oregon Trail Center and the Cove at the other end, and two strings between it, Main Street and the riverfront. And any chance that I had for any public input when, when they were talking about the Blue Heron site, I was wishing that we had done a better job of broadening our, our definition or broadening the length of that River Walk, because it really needs to reach all the way from Clackamas Park and past Clackamas Park to the Cove, all the way from the Cove, all the way to Blue Heron. Now you're talking about something that is, that is unique to any city. So, you know, that's, that's partly what I like about Oregon City now and, and partly, I think, a great potential that we have, if we keep thinking about that pearl and strings in, kind of in the greater downtown, all the way from the Cove and the end of the Oregon Trail up to Blue Heron.
Yeah. Good conceal, Mike. All right, the, thank you. So, what about Oregon City would you like to change in the future and what can improve? And some of the prompt questions are, what should we definitely consider? What's concerned? What's changed in the last five, ten, twenty years? What changes don't you like?
Patty goes first. Someone's gonna talk.
I'm gonna think about this one.
Would you, would you repeat the questions, Pete? I mean, I know what they are, I just
Yeah, sure. Yeah, the main question is, what about Oregon City would you like to change in the future? What can improve? So, what should we definitely consider? What causes you concern?
I think we've all kinda brought those up in our thoughts already, but I'll repeat that
Yeah.
For the future, it's just a development of those, both ends of downtown and improvement of, of transportation throughout the town. We once used to have, what was that, the trolley that would take people from one end to the other? I'd like to see that trolley come back and especially as we develop both ends, to take people from one to another. A lot of seniors can't walk that distance.
Okay.
So, something like that. But I, I think we brought up also the River Walk, the, the, anything, all those things we've already brought up, I think that's the things that, but improve the, being able to move people through the city and more TriMet access for people.
TriMet transit access?
Yeah. Christopher talking, I see him, see his lips moving, I didn't know if he was talking.
Oh, sorry, I thought, I thought I was on
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris.
I'll throw out a couple of ideas and this is definitely not exhaustive, an exhaustive list, but I, I personally think that Highway 99 is a, it's the classic, you know, back in the, I don't know when, you know, seventies, whenever the road was really widened and built out, it's like the classic across all these cities across America where the, where this road divides or, or keeps us from really connecting with something really important in our city. You know, you see it in a lot of places, where the city gets divided by this freeway or by this road. And I think Highway 99 is a huge obstacle to us really engaging with the river. And I don't know what that means yet, but I wonder if there are ways that we could somehow lessen the impact of Highway 99 through our city. And, you know, I'm there every day, I see the traffic every day and I see the, you know, the eighteen-wheelers rumbling through and, you know, gravel growing everywhere and dust and noise. You can't stand on the corner of 99 in Maine and have a conversation with anybody. It's so noisy. And I, this is also, I think it's a problem with how we connect to the Blue Heron property eventually too, is, you know, back in the day, High, Main Street connected all the way down there, you know, it was like a part of the city and
Yeah.
I think Highway 99, I'll just say it, I think it's a big problem. It's, I think it's a, it's an issue. So, I think if there was any one thing that I was gonna focus on, is how, what, what we could do better is transform 99 into this amazing tree-lined boulevard and, and promenade right next to the river. If we could do that, I think that would be a big game changer with, with Oregon City.
If I can tag on to what Chris
I'll talk about all the other ideas some other time, I got a bunch of ideas, but I'll just put that one out there for now.
To tag on to, to tag on to what Chris was saying, one time several years ago on our Planning Commission, we talked about 99 and the way downtown looked, all the gray buildings and they looked pretty old and there was a big discussion, what can we do to the facades of downtown to make it look more receptive, to make people wanna come in off of 99 into our Main Street? It still looks like most of the buildings are the drab old paint, I think the only one that really painted anything was 503 trees, to make it look like green, but, but I agree with you, Chris, because people drive by and they don't think about it. But adding on to that, since I have a store down there right off the bridge, you would not believe the traffic on, there's, I don't think there's any way around it, coming off of the West Lynn, Oregon City Bridge, it backs up there every night, all the way back over the bridge, because they're all trying to get on 99 down there, 99 in Maine that you talked about, Chris. And then those trying to turn onto the bridge, I, we almost wish there was a light that allowed them to turn left, because so many people, I've seen people throwing things at cars ahead of them and like, get, move, go, just pull out. And people are yelling and the road rage down there is incredible. That whole, besides 99, all that traffic coming off there, I wish there was a better way of controlling that, because there is a lot of traffic. And with the 205 bridge coming up, that whole intersection down there by the bridge is gonna be a disaster area for weeks while they tear down the 205 bridge. Boy, what a mess it's gonna be, because I can't picture, the TriMet buses were not allowed to go over that bridge anymore, they took 205, but now that, I don't know how they're gonna get, and that's to go all the way back into Portland to go to the other side. But, you're right about 99 and, but that area is a state highway right off the bridge, right down to Hi, 99 in Maine, and that's also a mess, I wish we could improve it.
Okay, yeah. So, concerned about the Evernathy Bridge widening as well.
Our downtown's gonna be so clogged up.
Let me, let me jump in here. Where, yeah, traffic in Oregon City, you know, because we have, we're in the unfortunate situation where every north-south route ends up in about two different places in the middle of our downtown. And to, and to try to get away from that is, is, I don't know, it's gonna take unbelievable amount of, of work. But I, I wanna tag on to a couple of things the other commissioner said. Commissioner Guile mentioned the trolley that we used to have downtown, I had to laugh, I can't turn my camera around, but I'm looking at a picture on my wall, a photograph from 1895 of an electric trolley operating on Main. So, here we are, hundred and how many years later and we've, we've kinda gone backwards and now everybody's in their private car instead of using that nice trolley that, you know, that we could have. And I think the trolley that we had downtown a few years ago was just ahead of its time and hopefully we'll be able to figure out to bring that back again. And real quickly, to Chris's point about the river and, and 99, one of the first places my wife and I lived after we got married back in the seventies was in the Dows. And the Dows, very similar to Oregon City, downtown the Dows is cut off from the river by I-84 and train tracks.
Yeah.
And when we lived there, you literally, you literally could not get to the river from downtown unless you went about a mile each, either east or west to a, an overpass or an underpass to get to the river. Now, they fixed it. They, I mean, I'm sure it was costly, but they have really done an excellent job of making the river accessible from downtown with a beautiful park that's right alongside I-84 and just, you know, three hundred yards from Main Street to Dows, which is Third Street. So, if anybody wants to take a road trip and see what can be done, there you go. Next time you go up to Gorge, check it out, because they fixed it. But, but Chris is absolutely right, we, we, you know, we've gotta figure out a way to open up that river to downtown. That, that's one thing I would change if I could.
Yeah, right. Next question is, is there anything else you wanna share about the future of Oregon City? What are some of the steps that we need to take to make the vision of that be? What do we need to work on and overcome to achieve that vision? And what should the vision process address for the comprehensive plan update? any specific or concrete steps, even however small?
Patty and Dirk, your turns.
Sure, I'll go. This is the one, is there anything else you wanna share about the future? That's what we're talking about? Those were the ones you just said?
Yeah, that's right.
I think I'm gonna just ride on the coattails of Chair Mitchell and Commissioner Staggs about the, about the traffic. I know a lot of people, they want the city to fix the traffic, you know, they want, they want free-flowing traffic, but like they're saying, you gotta be careful what you wish for, because if we start adding more lanes to 213 and, you know, try to free up 99 in some way, we're just gonna be, we're gonna be caught in the epicenter of two even bigger freeways that just make the city less livable. So, I don't know how we can deter, you know, that kind of growth and, and actually go backwards and try to, you know, maybe detract the traffic a little bit, I don't know, maybe take, take lanes out and put in bike lanes and a center median, just to make it so uncomfortable for people to go through there, they, they find something else. People have done it, they've done it to Malala Avenue, I can't say they ruined it. I mean, it, it makes it easier to make left turns, you're not getting, you know, T-bones trying to make a left turn across two lanes. It improved things. So, I mean, some people may hate the city for, you know, considering things like that to try to slow things down, but I think sometimes slowing things down can make a city look better. And I don't know how that would work, but it's just an idea.
Thank you.
I agree, Dirk.
Just a quick
Bypass somewhere.
Yeah, go ahead.
Where do you put the bypass? In the river?
I think slowing down Highway 99 could be part of the solution.
Cause currently it's posted, what?
I think thirty-five.
Thirty-five, yeah.
Thirty-five.
No, isn't it thirty? Cause as you're coming along, 99, I think it's thirty.
It, thirty or thirty-five, it's got a three in it.
Cause I come down, I come down there all the time and there's a police car sitting under the bridge and it's, you gotta be doing thirty. My concern with what you just said is, the traffic, if you slow it down too much, again, I'm referring to the long lines coming off
Yeah.
West Lynn, Oregon City Bridge and, and that area there, 99, they are all trying to get to 99 and you would not believe the backups and so
I know.
And so the slow up is, the congestion is because And so the slow up is, the congestion is because there's so many people in their cars.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's a solution to that.
But you add lanes and it's already hard to talk. It's gonna get harder to talk.
And you can't add lanes to that bridge. It's, it's already narrow.
No. Yeah, what kind of, what kind of, uh-
Who planned that?
They planned, they planned it a long time ago.
Yeah.
This is the same thing with Selwood, right? Everyone knows about the Selwood problem, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It took me one time, it took me an hour to get from the Gofflin to the Selwood Bridge one morning.
Same here.
It's just gonna get, it's gonna become the same thing here unless we address the public transportation, unless we address transportation, so.
Let's close the borders and not allow anybody else to move here. I'm kidding.
I'm a call.
Yeah, James Blaine Society.
Okay.
Did you actually just say that? Is that, did that really happen?
Oh, yeah. Come and visit, but don't stay. I'm a call. Our governor.
The proponent of land use planning for the state.
And then they named the whole waterfront after him.
That's true. They were gonna put the freeway down there and put the waterfront park there.
It was Harbor Drive. I used to go there with my parents back then.
Okay, um, so on to, is there anything more about that that anyone would like to add before we go on to participation? Okay.
You're always repeating that the last, the last, I don't think we really commented on the last one that you said, right? What was the last?
Well, is there, well, it was kind of a generalized question. Is there anything else you wanna share about how to make the vision a reality? Um, so there's been, let me repeat back what people have said, because we're getting to the point where we can summarize some things. There's a lot of, uh, ideas about improving access to the river, um, trying to overcome the barrier of ninety-nine E, um, but also trying to, uh, improve transportation options and make that connection between, you know, northern Oregon City and the mill site. So we're talking about making that a tree-lined boulevard, more walkable. Obviously, there's a regional challenge here because there's bridge traffic coming off ninety-nine E and we've got Abernathy. But there seems to be a strong desire in these comments to access the river and create more options to get to it and then make that more of a place where people wanna hang out.
Pete, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Wasn't there in the, uh, River Walk, and Laura probably knows about this, when all the charrettes, we were, weren't we gonna have a wide, uh, walk where people could walk and, and stop and there was gonna be seats? But we were gonna have a sloping area down to the river where we could do concerts or, uh, people could kayak down there. Wasn't that planned down by there? But I don't know if there was any other access to the river between Clackamette Park and the Willamette area, um, Willamette Falls area. But I know we've looked at all those slopes that went down, because you couldn't plan anything because of the way the river ebbs and flows up high during the rainy season. But weren't we, were we gonna plan off that River Walk? Any other access to the river?
The River Walk, sorry?
I was just gonna say that there's the adopted plans that we might wanna just revisit, which are the McLaughlin Boulevard Enhancement Plan, which goes back a ways. Um, and then the Downtown Community Plan, uh, which are both older but adopted plans. And it'd be interesting to visit those, um, which is what the consultants are doing, but see what's-
The River Walk also, I think, had some extensions where you could get off and come into the downtown area, correct? Indeed. There was like a little avenue or a little area. But was there any other access to the river other than Clackamette and down at the, at the Old Falls? Was there, were we planning anything? Because of what, what Chris was saying, more access to the river, but you have to go either down there or way down there. Is there, was there anything planned in between?
The River Walk focused mainly on the Willamette Falls Legacy Project site, and it did have, um, a public yard area as well as a place where you can go off of the public yard to put your toes in the water and a dock in there as well. Um, but that's, of course, a high-level framework plan at this point, or master plan. There has been conversation over the years about a dock on Eighth Street, although I know that there has been some concerns related to that. You know, behind the courthouse, you can kinda go down-
The steps that go down, that Rocky says is haunted.
So we have heard that. We've also heard that there's some technical difficulties there too, but it's not on, I don't think it's on any plan, but we'll have to revisit all those plans that Pete was talking about to see if it is on a plan. But no, no-
Because I agree with Chris. Access to the river, that river is a beautiful river, and we should, um, make more plans to get to it.
I know that right behind the courthouse where the ninety-nine E is, ninety-nine is actually on an abutment right there. It's so close to the rivershore. Um, so I know it pinches off in that location. It may pinch off in a few other locations, but that requires more engineering and thought. Um, you know, potentially to, uh, you know, I'm thinking like pontoons like they've got on the, uh, river further up, you know, where you've got bike lanes on pontoon, things like that, you know?
I've got a question.
Uh-huh.
Does anybody know, and I guess I just haven't paid enough attention to know the answer to this, but do people coming across the bridge into, down to Main Street to get onto the ninety-nine? Are they coming primarily from the two oh five or from other places?
That is a great question. Um, I don't know what the traffic model shows for that, but I know the backup that you're talking about. Laura, do you know?
I do not.
Chris, I, and Pete, I mean, from what I've seen, a lot of people will get off at the West Lynn exit off two oh five, Chris is correct, because they don't wanna go all the way over to Oregon City exit to, to get on that because of the backup. So people who come in on two oh five from, um, trying to get to Cambie from West Lynn, but also any points south of two oh five, they don't want to take the next exit. They wanna get off right there at West Lynn, come over the bridge, because it's a, they think it's quicker. It's not. Close the two oh five exit.
And then they're stuck. Yeah. At, uh, at evening rush hour, because I've done it, there are also, uh, a lot of people that get off either at the Willamette exit or even further back up at, now, what is that? Borland, is that Borland Road?
Borland Road, yes.
Uh, Stafford, or at Stafford. They get off there and go down Willamette Falls Drive-
Yep, I've done it.
Trying to get off of two oh five because two oh five is backed up so much. And then Willamette Falls Drive backs up most of the way back to Willamette when that happens. So there's a lot of that commute where they're, 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 instead of getting off at Oregon City, they're getting off way before, hoping that the back way is faster.
And I've done it.
So, so have I. I worked in Lake Oswego for a couple of years. I, I over, uh, next to Tuolumne, and, uh, yeah, done.
Put a toll on the, on the Abernathy Bridge, the little one there at West Lynn, Oregon City Bridge. Oh, stop it. I'm kidding.
Bridge toll.
Five dollars.
That kinda leads to my, my, I guess my answer to the last question is what can we do? But what's, what are some of the? Well, I think addressing, addressing traffic generally, because it seems like, it seems like traffic and, and transportation are some of the bigger, or one of the issues that is having a big impact on the quality of life in Oregon City and how we, so it seems like it ought to be a big part of the OC twenty forty process of resolving and solving questions around traffic, which leads back to the Highway ninety-nine thing as well. So they're kind of all, you know, tied together. Um, so, I'll put that out there as a, as a, as a, as a thought. Chris, maybe we ought to have a bridge from the two oh five to the ninety-nine, a new bridge that spans over the Willamette River somewhere-
Near Cambie.
Somewhere south of the falls that, so people can just get on the ninety-nine and go out to Cambie and not have to go through Oregon City.
Exactly. Chris, I was also thinking, I used to down, work downtown Portland. You'd listen to the news and if two oh five was backed up, you'd take ninety-nine all the way from downtown, all the way out to Oregon City. And I remember how backed up that would get, because two oh five's at a standstill. Take any other route. So you'd all get on ninety-nine coming this direction, and it would get backed up even into Portland, trying to get on ninety-nine to come out to Oregon City. It's, uh, maybe when two oh five's improved, it'll lighten it up.
I mean, it's, it's the classic situation all along the Willamette River. There aren't enough, there aren't enough connections across the river, across to the different parts of the city. Or different parts of the metro area, I should say. You know, we need a bridge. We need more bridges across that, across that river. My opinion.
It's a good one.
Okay. So this question, in what ways, in what ways would you like to participate in the OC twenty forty process? And there are various options. Attending public meetings, commenting on the Vision website, following the city's Facebook page or other social media, completing online questionnaires through your neighborhood association, through your school, place of worship, or other group, reading the Oregon City News and/or Oregon City Trail News, or staying informed by email. Now, as the planning commissioner, you're, you're kind of answering as a group, but at the same time you can answer as individuals, so that's totally fine. Do you have a preferred method of participation?
I guess I'll, again, I'll say something, because everybody's being real quiet. I think Mike is aware, because we are on a, a lot of the different chit-chats. One of the chit-chats that never allowed that kind of information, Amber Ray, has put it out there to them. Lynn Anderson, um, wife of, of, of one of our city commissioners, also put a post on Oregon City Raw, and I raised it all the way to the top, so it's the first thing people see is participate in that. So I think more visibility, because not everybody reads the paper or watches this or that. But the more we get it out there on the chit-chat where there seems to be thousands of people, I think we're gonna hopefully ask them to respond and, and make it easy for them to get out there to the website. So I, I think if Mike knows, uh, that it's probably on the other ones. I don't watch those as much as I watch the one I'm operating. But I think, I don't think hardly anybody reads the paper anymore. So it's, and I think it's dependent on us to get it out there on the internet as often as possible. Anybody else on that?
Yeah, okay. Now that the paper is a paywall kind of a situation when you go to OC News, I mean, I don't know how many people actually pay, but-
Yeah, it's all regional now. They, they cut it down to one paper, rather than West Lynn had one, we had one, Lake Oswego, now it's all region.
But I know Ray Rendelman did graciously do an article when this thing was kicking off, and I hope he continues to do that.
Nobody, nobody else is gonna say anything.
Pete, are we, are we asking these questions about ourselves or about the, the public participation?
I would, I would answer for yourself in this situation.
Okay, because the public, United States, the easiest way you can get them to, you know, if you can get them to click on something, you'll get some participation. You want them to come in, it's not gonna happen.
Yep.
So as far as us, well, we, we're talking about it right now, but I think emails work pretty good. If somebody gets a good, good idea, as long as we know who to send it to, and it works for me.
How often does our communications director in Oregon City use her email list? Does she have one or post it on the site? Does she do it weekly?
Yeah, so we're doing bi-weekly media blasts where we'll go on to our mailing list, which we have through, uh, MailChimp. Um, and then the same kind of information goes out on Facebook, Instagram, we're gonna be using, when we gear up, the photo essay part of this, because we're gonna have a little photo, photo competition kind of thing. And then, um, there is a Twitter feed that it goes out on as well. Yeah, which are, you know, control, the city's main Twitter and the city's main Facebook. Um, but we can spend a little more money, which is what we do, and we'll boost the posts. So we'll pay Facebook to boost the posts a little higher up and that sort of thing. And that actually has a pretty significant effect when we do that. Um, and then really what we're trying to get people to do is to forward anything we send out to people beyond, you know, our known lists and get them to go to the website and sign up or find out about the project by going to the website some other way, so.
Are each of the neighborhood associations using their existing list and also promoting it?
I don't know. That's a great question, Tom. Um, uh-
They have very small attendance at their meetings, but they do have broad, uh, email lists.
Okay.
Have you ever tracked the numbers when you've done that blitz that you just talked about? Have you ever tracked, like, there's a big increase the days afterwards and it drops off? Have you been able to track, okay, at this point we did this, this is what we had?
Yeah. It is tracked. It is recorded. Um, and you do notice that. You notice a spike and then it levels off a day or two afterwards, for sure. Yeah. So, um, and they took the best time to do it, for some reason, is ten AM on a Tuesday morning. That may or may not be true, given COVID. Um, people's work patterns have changed. All right. Um, what other groups, peoples, uh, or communities should we contact to make this a really inclusive process? You know, we do have a very broad and, and large project advisory team with a lot of groups representative, but I'm sure there is others out there that I haven't thought of, and I'd love to know of some of the smaller groups that you think we should engage with, um, that you all are participating in, either formally or informally.
About the service clubs, Optimus or, um, VFW?
Yalz parking lot's been empty since March.
That's great, Mike, yeah. Um, Lions, Rotarians, Rotary, yeah.
And anybody running for a commission position in the fall, they should, that's what they should be number one talking about to their constituents or their hopeful constituents.
Candidates.
Seriously, if they're gonna run for office, they need to, to talk to people and say, what would you like us to see? I'm running to, so I can do those things.
That's really good. Those are two great ones.
Because, because Mike, I'm planning to do those interviews like I did the last time with any candidates running for commission, so those will be opportunities on the cable television.
Yeah, and that's, that's another, just using Willamette Falls TV. Could we put together some sort of presentation on there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you gonna have candidates to interview other than the incumbents, Tom?
I, I understand there's, uh, candidates against them now. Some more people have registered. So that's why, I thought somebody needs to introduce them so people know who they are, because I'm not, I don't recognize the name. So I'm gonna do what I did last time and give everybody a chance to know who they are, and that's a good opportunity then to advertise it.
Oh, that's great. Awesome. Okay. All right. Well, if, uh, that's the end of the questions. If you think of anything else, just email me. Uh, I'm gonna, uh, like with all the community conversations, we're gonna be entering, entering them in, um, via the survey format for the time being. So we've got a written, uh, record of it. And then, uh, we're compiling each one and, um, making sure that we've gotten every, all of the recording uploaded to YouTube.
Has your mailer gone out yet, Pete?
I beg your pardon?
Has your mailer gone out, the postcard or whatever you were gonna send out? I don't really follow through anyway.
The first mailer went out, you know, at the very beginning, that was the, the red, white, and blue one that went out to every, uh, every resident in the urban growth boundary. Um, not just every taxpayer, but every resident. So that was about eighteen thousand, um, people on that list.
Does that hit apartments, like the, the apartments down there on, on, uh, Main Street?
Yeah, but what we're gonna do, because you never know what's happening with the mail- mailbox on site, um, we're going to follow up with, uh, hard copy mailers to all of the multifamily, uh, projects and talk to the apartment managers and make sure that they're not just getting placed on the top of a box somewhere in the laundry room and forgotten about. So that's going to be the next thing, um, as, as part of the, uh, effort to really try to be inclusive. And then, um, also going to be, uh, working through the project advisory team, each PAT member, we're asking to do two of these community conversations so that we can really broaden our input.
I know you said UGB, um, Pete, but have you, again, I think I brought this up before. Are you doing Holly Lane, Holly Lane or Maple, um, lane up there that comes off of the, the Beaver Creek Road, but also Holly Lane, which they're all part of Oregon City. They have Oregon City mailing addresses at least. A lot of people on that.
We just did the mailers to areas within the urban growth boundary.
So Maple, I mean, Holly is not.
Part of it is and part of it's not.
It's impacted by it.
Yeah. The northern half is and the southern half isn't, which has always been a issue.
Yeah, I know. Cause Christine always brings that up. We never get your mailers and it impacts anything you do, impacts Holly Lane and Redlin and Maple up above.
Right.
Yeah.
We did include it in trail news and things like that, but if you, if anyone in the planning commission would like to do community conversations with people on Holly Lane, that would be good.
Christine.
Pete, are we asking the planning commission to also conduct at least one community conversation themselves as well?
We are. Uh, yeah. Thanks for mentioning that. We're asking you as between now and the end of, uh, October, um, to do one of these, um, and then, uh, and then get the information, either typing it into the survey or just send it to me, uh, once you've done it, send me your notes and I'll, and I'll type it in for you.
Just to add to that.
Question on that.
Sorry.
Yeah, sure, Patty.
Um, when we do these, um, is it to people that just live in Oregon City or can they work in Oregon City or do they have to do either of those?
It doesn't, I don't think it's really that important. I think as long as their lives have been, uh, you know, touched by Oregon City, either traveling or spending time here in any way, um, you know, that kind of gets to what Tom was concerned about, which was engaging the larger community outside of Oregon City. Um, so I would say yes, that's, we would encourage that. Sure. Yeah.
What I was going to say is I'm not physically meeting with anybody. Nobody, we haven't had an HOA meeting in months. So, but I am doing a blast out to our HO mailing list and our Facebook page. So that's the same as holding or conducting one if you had a master list like that. Cause we can't get them to come to a meeting.
Right. It's difficult right now. I understand. Um, so, you know, the alternative to that is, uh, you know, maybe do it on the phone with a very small group, either possibly even using FaceTime or something like that. Or you can print out, you know, the materials and do it that way and then, uh, just hand them out and then maybe talk it over at a socially distanced gathering. That's kind of one of the alternatives that we talk about. Maybe a lunch date.
Taco Bell.
All right, everybody. Thank you so much. I really appreciate this. Uh, it's good exercise for me and, uh, we'll be doing this, um, tomorrow night with the historic review board. Kelly Reed will be doing it and then Parks and Rec Advisory Committee coming up here at the end of the month as well.
Okay.
Great. Sounds good.
Great. All right. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you. Is there anything, what are we doing next? Sorry.
Last item on the agenda is approval of twenty nineteen planning commission minutes. And there are.
Me. Yes.
There were ten sets of minutes attached. Um, I, I, I don't think we want to spend the time to have a separate motion for each one. So we'll, um, we'll do them as a group. But first off, if anyone who reviewed them, are there any corrections or additions or changes to, to any of those meetings, minutes?
I didn't see any.
I didn't see anything that raised concern.
Yeah. Then I'll make a motion, I guess, to approve the, all the minutes, all the way back in time.
Through all time, back in all time.
Who spent all that time putting them all together to give us a group of ten? I, I make the motion to, to approve them.
Okay. Okay. So we, okay. Moved by Commissioner Guile and seconded by Commissioner Gage to approve the ten sets of minutes that were attached to our packet tonight. Call for the roll, please.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Staggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Gage?
Aye.
Chair Mitchell?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next and last on the list is communications.
Oh. Actually, Pete, I just want to ask you a question real quick. So the continuance tonight was to October twenty eighth, not September twenty eighth.
I heard October twenty sixth.
October twenty sixth.
October twenty sixth.
Okay. Not September. Um, okay.
No.
So we will not be having a September fourteenth meeting. We may or may not have a September twenty eighth meeting. So you at least get one night off next month so you can conduct these community conversations, uh, over the fence with your neighbor if you like.
You're just trying to cut down my time at meetings before I'm off this commission. Yeah, fewer meetings to go to.
Would you like more development to go? So yeah, there's nothing on the agenda.
Laura, anything else?
Uh, no. Thank you very much for your participation in OC twenty forty, everybody.
I had a question for Laura.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Question?
I had a question for Laura.
Could you have some?
Yes.
Yeah.
I got a, I got a mailer in the mail about the September twenty eighth meeting that it affects my property in some way, some item on the agenda. What is that and how do I handle that?
Yeah. Good question. So I didn't realize they had hit mailboxes yet. You must be one of the first.
I got it. It was green.
He's been standing there waiting for it.
The city did, is working on a legislative file for code amendments through our Public Works Department and they include a variety of things, including some code cleanup for geologic hazards and some small cell stuff and some street improvement type clarifications as well, um, undergrounding of utilities. Uh, I think you may have had a work session or some briefing. Have you not? No. Okay. I'm mixing up my groups. So you'll see a legislative file for that coming through. I think the meeting that they're going to have is this same one we did the continuance. Was it Sep? Maybe I can't quite recall.
October twenty sixth.
Yeah. Um, they're doing online open house related to just the geologic hazards code changes before that. And so if you want to go attend the geologic hazards open house, please contact the city and we.
So it wasn't just his neighborhood? It went to all of us at citywide?
Yeah. Is it local or is it just all the entire city?
It went to every property owner and resident, I believe, within the urban growth boundary. So it went to everybody.
Yeah. Since we all live within that, how, can we still vote on it?
Oh, yeah. It's legislative. So there's no.
Okay. All right.
Um, yeah, you're, uh, you have to vote on it.
Okay.
Um, and so you should be seeing that come through in the next couple of months.
All right.
Can I ask a question too?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if, if I'm, should be asking you, my neighborhood's been asking me, they've hearing a lot of romings about five G network. And they were saying that supposedly, I guess the city commission had talked about it on polls, but they were wondering, what about all those neighborhoods where all the wires are underground? Are they going to put poles in now that there's underground? Do you know anything about that? I don't know what to answer.
Yeah.
Streetlights.
There's a couple of questions there. So one of the code amendments that is coming before you is something that specifies no new poles.
No new poles?
No, you knew, uh, utility poles in the right of way, uh, but five G in general. So the city commission did adopt standards for five G already. They identified a set of clear and objective standards for how big the facilities can be, distances. There's I believe three hundred feet between each facility for each provider. Um, so they could be closer than that.
So each provider could have one and there could be several poles?
Right.
Oh, my goodness.
And so there's a, we had, the city has received one application for one small cell so far. And so we're in the middle of processing it that, um, at this point, the code also requires a conditional use, or I mean, a site plan design review for that. So they're applying, my understanding, for site plan design review right now. Some of the code amendments do include removing that provision. When we, when the city commission adopted standards for exactly what the small cells can look like and how often they can be, we knew we had a conflict where it also required site plan designer view and we were always intending to come back and remove that from site plan designer view because we already adopted the standards.
So again, what happens to neighborhood where all the wires are underground in the new one, neighborhoods?
So, um, I don't know the exact technical answer to your question, but I could find out and send you a response.
People are wondering if they're going to put up new poles in our neighborhoods.
Uh, the five G standards the city commission adopted apply to just the right of way only. So if you want to put up a new pole for a five G on private property, it's subject to chapter seventeen eighty of the Oregon City Municipal Code, which is communication facilities. So we would, we regulate them the same now as we do a cell tower. The only carve out that we're doing is this special provision for the right of way. From my understanding, five G providers like to keep them all within the right of way anyway because then you don't have to deal with all the different property owners. You're just dealing with one municipality, um, and so forth.
Well, I'm talking about the right of way. I thought neighbor, the, the city had years ago said, we want as few poles as possible. And that's why underground cables for everything, cable, telephones, everything was underground. So does this new thing mean that there will be, even if there's public right of way, poles starting to show up in like HOAs where the wires are underground? Will we expect to see that?
One of the new, one of the provisions in the right of way is that you can't build a new pool, pole for just five G. It's got to be attached to something already. But the code amendments that, um, Commissioner Schlagenhoffer mentioned do clarify the exceptions for when you don't need to underground things when new development, maybe the development is so small and everything is overhead on your block and there's no, you're not on a major roadway, then there might be provisions where we don't want you to underground where the code right now just says underground everything. So it carves out some provisions, really to the proportionality as well.
The neighborhoods get to vote on that, whether they want those in there or not in their neighborhoods?
In five G?
Yeah.
Um, they can participate in this legislative code amendment process, but the city commission already adopted the standards for five G in the right of way. If it's not in the right of way and it's on private property, it'll go through site plan design review, which would mean that there's a process for them to participate in.
Are they paying a fee to the city for those poles?
They're in the right of way?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. They're, they have to do some franchise stuff with Dante Posades, um, our franchise person.
I know it was off the subject of anything tonight, but I've been getting a lot of questions what this all means. And all I keep hearing is everybody's worried about more poles that they thought they like their clean neighborhoods.
From my understanding, I believe the concentration is to put them along major roadways and in the provisions and the right of way provisions the city commission adopted, it says basically like you put them on major roads first and then you have to show why you have, you need to make it into the neighborhoods. So there's a ranked priority system, major arterials, minor arterials. So, um, we'll see what happens with that, but there is some provisions to help protect neighborhoods at least for a while.
Do the neighborhoods, once that five G goes in, are the neighbors going to be billed for that or is that something comes out of taxes? Or is the fees from those companies cover all the, the usage of the five G? Do you know? Like a neighbor is not going to have to pay, we have to pay a fee for Comcast, but do we have to, do the neighbors have to pay a fee to have that five G or use it?
Um, no, at this point, it's the city just renting the pole or the use of the right of way to the provider.
You know, Mike, something, or was that Pete?
Well, it's just, it, it's just going to be on your bill, whether it's AT&T or Verizon or whatever built in there is, is their cost to build out five G networks.
So it's a provider you have for your phone right now?
Yes.
Ah, people thought it meant for everything, everything. Okay.
The city is not forcing everyone to change providers.
Phone. It's your, it's your internet provider.
Comcast or Century Link or whoever?
Century Link. Yeah, right. AT&T, whoever it is. Yeah.
Okay.
There are, there are also, I, I know there are also a number of cities across the country, involved in lawsuits with the FCC over, um, what kind of restrictions or rules cities can put into place on five G. So I think it's still kind of a unresolved situation, how it's, how it's ultimately going to go forward.
Mike, is it the way of the future? Is it a big improvement over what everybody's got now?
Yeah. Well, it's a huge speed improvement or not, well, speed and bandwidth. I mean, they're talking about you would download, you could download a full length movie in like five or six seconds.
Really?
Yeah. You, you and all your neighbors at the same time. It doesn't, um, it doesn't have the, the bandwidth restriction that, that four G does.
Good to know. Thank you for your information.
Sure. But, you know, stay tuned. There's a whole lot of details still to be worked out everywhere. Anything else on that?
Yeah, one quick question.
Yes, there.
Is that still just for portable devices or is that going to be replacing Wi-Fi? Is it just for portable electronics or is it, are they trying to get it in our homes?
I think it replaces, I, I think it replaces Wi-Fi. I think it comes to your home.
Oh, so I shouldn't move out of the city yet?
You're still going to have Wi-Fi in, in your, you'd still have Wi-Fi in your home, but I think the signal gets, I think it's signal gets to your router via a five G network.
Interesting.
I think. I'm getting it over my head here. Can you see me? Here we go.
So that means we all have to go out to Costco and all buy new Wi-Fi units for our homes to adopt a five G. Someone's, someone's going to make a lot of money.
I think in order to take advantage of it, you would have to have a five G router.
Wow. They're going to be expensive too, I bet.
What's even crazier is they're trying to put it in rural areas.
Hmm.
Which makes even less sense. I don't know how that's going to work.
Well, Mike, you lasted through the meeting.
You was gone a little bit.
Well, I, I disappeared for a while.
You didn't miss anything important.
Okay. Anything else from anybody?
No, I'm good.
No. All right then. Thank you all. We're adjourned.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Night.
Night.
Goodbye.
Good to see everybody. Bye. Oops, you turned you off.